Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Caprio.
Here.
Counselor Duty.
Here.
Counselor Esposito. Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Fuji. Counselor Siena.
Here.
I have a motion to approve the October 2nd regular meeting, Water Pollution Control Authority, and Town Council.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Duty, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor King Delora.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Siena.
Yes.
Motion to move the October 19th special meeting, Town Council.
I'll move it with the following corrections. Under item 1, roll call, you need to delete Deputy Mayor Wentworth, Counselor Esposito, and Counselor Fuji, as they were not present.
I'll second it.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Duty, with the corrections. Roll call.
Mayor King Delora.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Siena.
Yes.
Item 3, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, Economic Development Commission.
The Economic Development Commission is now meeting twice a month. They have decided to host a forum in January for all of you, planning and zoning in the public on the Route 80 and the future development of Route 80. So, in the next few months, they're going to be planning the forum, sure that however they're going to do that. So, that will be their big project coming up.
Item B, Permanent Project Building Committee.
I don't think anyone was here, but I have an update, if you want me to do it real quick, that was given to me. They did vote to approve the roof for the school, so now, as of tomorrow, we'll be signing off on that grant information. That will be going over to the state, so that'll be another part of the project and the reimbursement that's going to be tied up. They had some discussion on the new boiler for the high school and the conversion to natural gas. Right now, some of them are feeling they didn't want to go towards a dual burner, but, you know, they still want to bring it back and talk more about that. And Bill Chody was at their meeting talking about the high school roof project. He did comment that the insulation board has collapsed and the membrane is being pushed up by fasteners, which will make matters worse on the old roof. Now, he's talking a lot about the flooding that we had that came in. And Ford has a couple of ideas on how to put on a new roof, but again, it will have to go out to bid. They did talk a lot about the leaks that we had during the last major storm. Those have been, they responded very well, the roofing company, and two of them came in and they have been fixed. So, we just have to wait for another driving rain, I guess, to see if that is a true or not. And Olympics starts Monday on community center, and we should have their full schedule by Friday. And in case we do need anybody for environmental issues, because there is asbestos on that form, we have Fasen O'Neil who's on a state contract that will be able to use. But I'll keep you posted if we think that needs to happen.
Thank you. Item C, Potato and Corn Festival.
There's no new report. You'll have that in November, but there was a request for certain invoices, and those are in your packet in front of you tonight. Mainly electrical, amusement, golf cart, food.
Signs.
Signs, yeah. So, they're in the packets in front of you to see.
Emergency Communications Committee.
We're trying to pick a date. We've got some dates for Quantapug Valley tour, so we're going to get that together.
And Finance Committee, if it's deferred to Counselor Angeloni.
Finance Committee met last week. There are a number of items on our agenda later on in regards to contingency transfers. What those are is in regards to the new software for the tax office. It's an online web service, and you can also do payments online all year round, rather than just during the two tax months, the two big collection months. And then, the other item that's on our agenda is the creation of the 1% Board of Ed Capital Fund and the refunding of the bonds in the bond resolutions for, to go ahead with our capital projects. And that was it.
Thank you, Ruth. Item 4, Town Managers Report.
Yes, one other item that I had brought up at the Finance Committee was the trees. We have a lot of trees that need to come down. There are safety issues, so there may be an issue of going over what was budgeted for this particular year, but we've got to get those trees down. They're liability situations. So, I just wanted to let you know, I'm going to have Fran at least start taking care of those before winter comes, but there may be an overage in that account, so I just wanted to let you know. I did put something in Management Report about wall field. We do have a proposal to move forward with the restrooms, and if everyone is good with that, we're ready to move ahead, because it does look great. If you haven't seen it, it looks fantastic. So, if there's no issues and everybody's read the memorandum, we'll move forward. If anybody has questions, you know, Kirk can answer those too, I think, too. Shitsy Drive, we have made an award. We should have a schedule. We're hoping it's going to be started ASAP before all May winter comes in and we can get all that resolved. Amados, they should be able to start Monday. We had an issue with the demolition permit. We've got all that resolved, so they should be starting next week. It'll only take a day and a half to two days. And lastly, the explanatory text is in. There's some in the back. They're also at the libraries, community center, senior center, and they're going into all the absentee ballots, but if anyone needs to pick them up, I put one in front of each of you, but Town Court's office. So, unless there's questions, that's, we'll end that tonight.
All right. Item 5, Community Events and Presentations. This evening, we'd like to give a presentation of thanks from myself, the council, and the town of North Branford, to Al Rose, for many dedicated years he's served our town, both on the council, the community. He's done a lot behind the scenes, and if I can ask you to come up here, Al.
This is on behalf of the council and town. Thank you for all of your years of service. Okay? I just want to be perfectly clear that this is the second one I've accepted. And that doesn't mean that I'm not going to come back sometime.
I'm waiting for you, Al.
When my schedule frees up a little bit, I'll come back. Again, you know, I have faith in you guys, and you do a good job, and I appreciate, as well as the rest of the town does, too, the time that you guys put in, you know, volunteering. It's a lot of work. You basically make a lot of enemies, but you keep us right side up. So, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm going out to dinner with my wife, why don't you stay here?
Item 6, Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence.
I'm Mr. Mayor, Cliff 51. A part of the community presentations, this one is one of the Ag Council's missions having a tractor pull this weekend, the 20th, at the farm. The tractors start showing up at 8:00 and start pulling at 9:00, so if you want to get a little bit of the Ag Council touring and fresh air, mind out and have a good time. And free.
And Cliff, where was it again?
At the Auger Farm.
Auger Farm?
Forest Road.
Forest Road. Mind out and enjoy it with us.
Okay. Are there any other statements?
Mr. Mayor, you sent a letter. No, is that Mr.?
Yeah. And one other thing, on the 18th, which is, I believe, Thursday morning at 7:30. At 7:30, there's going to be Meet the Candidates. Senator Ed Meyer, Cindy Cartier, and State Representative Vincent Candelaure will be here at Town Hall Chambers. 7:30 AM, there'll be light refreshments and coffee. There'll be a brief question and answer. I have a letter here addressed to the council. Dear Town Council Members, Have you ever toured the present-day police station building on Forest Road and viewed the conditions of this building? I attended a police commissioners' meeting on Tuesday, October 9th. I left that meeting disgusted from hearing about the deplorable conditions that exist in this present-day building. So, on Friday, October 12th, I took a tour of the police department building. They were right about the conditions mentioned at the meeting. For example, here are some of my observations. The rooms were like small cramped cubicles. The slope of the stairs that were going down to the basement was hazardous when walking down them. There was water being pumped into a sink because of moisture on the basement of the building. Lockers for the officers look like high school lockers. Jail cells were dark and hard to monitor with cameras. An air conditioner was running to help cool down an enclosed generator area. Small inadequate rooms, work rooms were being used by the officers. Showers were not working. Police cruisers were left outside in the rain. Winter months, ice covers them. These are only some of my observations. So, I feel that each Town Council member needs to investigate the police station building at a convenient time to see their own firsthand observations. When the town can build a multi-dollar-looking baseball field behind the police station, I feel that we can improve the public safety with a better police station. Perhaps we could have the emergency headquarters attached to the police building instead of where it is now. It would be located closer to Evergreen Woods in North Branford. Finally, I would like the Town Council to ask the state Senator Ed Meyer, our state representative Vincent Candelaure, for a grant to help out the town with this problem. Sincerity, James Dwyer. Item 7, Resignations and Appointments. Item A, Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee. Dr. Michael Martin, an affiliate of 76 Walnut Street, Norfolk, is interested in being a member of this committee. Appointment would be until December 31st, 2012. This was sent by Mary Bigelow.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the appointment, Dr. Michael Martin, to the Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee for a term to expire on December 31st, 2012.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Siena.
Yes.
Item 8, Unfinished Business Discussion in Action. Item A, Capital Projects Bonding Ordnances.
I'm going to turn this over to Anthony, because I'm going to do it, too. Because we have new resolutions, so maybe we can go through and decide which have to be going around.
I could desk tonight. I did put some new resolutions out related to the upcoming new project. The language that's in the resolutions that were passed out tonight is identical, first paragraph, the header, if you will, to each of the resolutions prepared by Robinson and Colt. There's one key word. Look at the last sentence in each of these motions on the capital projects. It references the motion attached in its entirety. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we had to act on resolutions twice, because that clause wasn't in there. So, the motions that were passed out this evening are the ones I'd like you to act on. In addition, besides the three bond resolutions, there is the 2.52. And the other thing I want to tell you, too, is the numbers are different than what you've seen previously. They've been bumped up to allow for contingency and issuance costs. The roof, for example, was estimated at 2.4 million. The bond council drew it up at 2.520, which again allows for a contingency and the issuance cost. 388 for the emergency communication upgrades, that lumps the three items. The police narrowbending, Public Works narrowbending, and the work to the tower on Reed's Gap Roadies, those are lumped together. The 651 is the two projects at Public Works. There was the building of the second half of the sanders shed and replacement of the roof on the Colt Storage Building. That's why the numbers are kind of different than what you've seen previously. So, those three items need to be acted on independently. And then, the bond council has asked for two 824 referrals to P&amp;Z for the two large projects, for the high school roof. You did an 824 referral previously to P&amp;Z for the capital improvement plan. This is an 824 referral solely for the purpose of the bond resolution. That's why it seems kind of duplicative, but it's not really, it's different animals. So, there's an 824 referral for the Public Works improvements, and there's an 824 referral for the high school roof. So, in effect, there's five motions you have to act on tonight. Three bond resolutions and two 824 referrals.
Are you saying that you have to go back to the planning and zoning again?
They need an 824. In order to do the bonding, they need to have an 824 referral and a blessing from planning and zoning, yes. And if we get this approved tonight by the council, it'll be on Thursday night's P&amp;Z agenda.
What was that sentence you said that had to be in there?
In its entirety.
If you see on the last sentence, and each one says, "in its entirety."
Oh, I got it. Okay, thank you.
Sometimes the motions don't reference the document in its entirety, and the bond council doesn't like that, so they'd like to see that word in there.
I'll make a motion to do an 824 referral to the North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission on the Plan and Design and Construction and Repairs 2, or Replacement of the Roof at the North Branford High School.
Moved by Counselor Duty, seconded by Counselor Angeloni.
I just have a couple of questions on all of these. We're sending these to P&amp;Z so that we could apply for the, to borrow the money? Is that?
Right.
The bond money?
Right.
Now, what happens if we go to get the bond money and we're not able to get the bond money?
There'd be no reason why we couldn't get the bond money. The only, it would be the rate we pay would be the only possibility.
It would just be a matter of what the rate is?
Correct.
Okay.
And the rates, as we know now, the short-term rates are very favorable, so...
So, it isn't like we would go back and we're only going to get partial, part of the money, and we would have to take things in or out of it?
No. Not a problem.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Siena.
Yes.
I'll make a second referral, 824 referral, to the North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission on the Plan and Design and Construction Improvements to the Public Works Facility in the town of North Branford.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Duty, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Siena.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council adopts the resolution appropriating $651,000 for the planning, design, and construction of improvements to the Public Works Facility in the town of North Branford, and authorizing the issuance of $651,000 in bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose in its entirety as attached.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Siena.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council adopts the resolution appropriating $2,520,000 for the planning, design, and construction of repairs 2 and/or replacement of the roof at North Branford High School, and authorizing the issuance of $2,520,000 of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose in its entirety as attached.
Second.
Question on that, is that 2.2 million, is that for the high school roof? Is that what that is?
Correct.
To replace the entire roof?
Correct.
Of what, of the entire place?
Because what we did was, yeah, other than the patches and stuff like that.
This is the gross amount. This is still subject to our school construction grant reimbursement process. We have to appropriate the entire amount, and then we'll get...
And then we'll see what we get. So, it's possible we get, what would happen if we got money back? We're going fund balance, or?
No, we would just, we're going to ban the...
It's just lower.
Yeah. If it got permanently bonded, the end will be less.
Okay.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Siena.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council adopts the resolution appropriating $388,000 for upgrades and improvements to the emergency radio communications in the town of North Branford, and authorizing the issuance of $388,000 of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose in its entirety as attached.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
I have another. I just have a question on that. That's something that's been a federal mandate?
Yes.
Then we have till the end of this, we're supposed to be done this year?
Yeah, everyone, that's correct.
Okay. I just want, so everybody knows that's listening at home. All righty.
Thank you, Counselor. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Siena.
Yes.
Item B.
Hang on, one second.
Yep.
Anthony, I have one question. I'm going through your CIP requests, area capital improvement.
Yes.
And I see a fire second rescue.
That's eliminated.
That's eliminated? Didn't, didn't we give you a rescue last year for a truck?
That second rescue was in there as a placeholder if the money that was foreseen from the water company, if there was ever an additional windfall of...
That would have went out, what, to Norfolk?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And we still got the heavy rescue coming here, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Item B, Updates to the Benefit Plan.
Believe it, believe it.
Item C, Amendments to Chapter 1, 2, 3, Proposed Ordinance 2012, -01 Building Construction.
Yes, you had scheduled a public hearing, Colonel Number 20. I'm asking that you cancel that, and we are going to do it for preparation for budget time instead of this one.
I like the motion to table that item.
We just got to cancel it.
Cancel it, sorry.
Do we need a motion, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Esposito.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Fuji.
Yes.
Counselor Siena.
Yes.
Item D, Amendments to Chapter 84, Proposed Ordinance 2012-02, Purchasing Ordinance.
I don't think we can do that yet.
We have a public hearing. I've got another five minutes, so I'll move on to nine, on New Business Discussion in Action.
Financial report or tax report?
Yeah, I don't want to get into the insurance. I'll go out to...
To Auger Farmhouse.
Item B, Auger Farmhouse.
That was just to get clarification. In the past, you have rented that building out. There were some issues. It's been vacant, but before winter comes in, we need to kind of know, do you want us to go back out and do a rental situation? Would you rather not, just so we know how to do oil and...
You know, I, I...
I have a couple of questions. Excuse me. What's the commission of the building right now? Is it rentable?
Is it now? Yes.
Have we ever considered getting a property manager to handle showing it?
I don't know. Last time they advertised mainly on Craigslist, so it was all done in-house.
Wouldn't it be advantageous to, you know, have a, be a step back? Have a property manager do the advertising, get the tenants in there, collect the checks, and just pass the check over to us?
I don't know. There's a cost to that. I could look into it.
It's only, I mean, it's only one...
It's only 10%.
Thing is, do we want the headache of being a landlord?
Yeah, I know. I know a little bit of the history of this, and I was going to share it with you. I mean, I know a lot of this fell onto Public Works and Franny with a lot of the issues...
And finance with the collection.
With, right.
What exactly is it? Is it an apartment? Is it a whole house for rent?
It's a family house.
We did, we rented the house to, like, a family? Is that what you did?
Yeah, yeah.
And we had issues with...
Right.
I don't think we've had a good experience renting.
Yeah, but if we get a real estate property manager in there handling it for us, all we do is collect checks. I mean, winter's coming. Somebody's going to have to pay for the oil.
That's assuming ten, tenors checks. Our last experience was, I think, we were about six months doing it, but by the time we're down now...
Yeah. It was a bad experience.
That's because we were handling it.
I know there was some talk of...
Is the housing authority capable of?
No.
No, they don't have the...
I mean, I, I know there was some talk of possibly, like, the Ag Commission maybe I mean, I, I know there was some talk of possibly like the Ag Commission maybe using it as a meeting house. And I don't know if they were interested, because that's already shaking his head no.
Is it, we, is it, well, you want an input from me officially?
Sure, if it comes to the mic.
Yes, Richard brought it up one time. And to be honest with you, we're gonna concentrate on the barn. We really don't wanna get into the house. I really wouldn't wanna be a key holder. I've heard the horror stories from Franny. His beeper went off day and night, holidays, weekends. When you become a landlord, you're a landlord 24/7, but unfortunately, that doesn't come under anybody's job title in the town. So guess who got all the calls? Franny. He got murdered.
Yep.
It wasn't a pleasant situation. It's, you know, so the Ag Commission, I, I personally, I work from home on my own home PC and I keep my files and everything there. And it's just easier if I went down there, you know, it just, it, it wouldn't work for me and I end up being the guy that kinda keeps track of what's going on while the farmers are busy farming. We definitely, I don't think, are interested in getting involved with the house. We're working forward slowly just on the barn, trying to keep that moving forward, so. And I, I just wanted to bring, cause, you know, when I was at the barn and stuff, Franny would stop by and it was just, it was a nightmare for the town and you're right. Do you wanna get in that mess again? And, and once you get, and you know yourself, any family with kids, they don't have to pay rent and you have to be very careful what you do when you try to get rid of them. And any profit you made on the house, you end up in legal fees trying to get them out. And like, you know, and it's just, it's sad because it is a house, but it doesn't fit anybody's needs at this time. So from, officially from the Ag Commission, I don't think we would wanna get involved.
What's overall condition in the?
I've never stepped foot in the place, to be honest.
I actually toured it.
It's not too, too bad.
Yeah, it's not too, too bad.
Make it a substation.
If I heard right, there is lead in there, so you can't rent for kids.
Yeah, and you know what? We should probably just leave it empty if there's all those issues.
I would winterize it.
Winterize it, not pour oil in it.
And then we should always take a look and possibly use it.
And if you know something, look for office space, you know, within one of the town.
Was it something with Pam or something?
Well, she was talking about doing an event there, but it's not gonna be for this year. But I think at least that would buy us some time to help with some options.
Thank you, but no thank you, right, Michael?
That helps me.
All right. You just can't turn the heat off because it'll fall apart.
No, we'll winterize it.
Okay, I have to open the public hearing to hear comments on the proposed ordinance 2012-02, which amends chapter 84 of the code of the town of North Branford entitled Purchasing. Is there anyone here that has comments on this public hearing?
Well, I.
I need you to.
I, I just wanted to alert the council to a brief memo that I, an unsolicited memo that was put in front of you. I had one of the associates in the office take a look at this issue. And lo and behold, it's our conclusion that such an ordinance were to be passed by the town would be illegal, not enforceable. It's almost identical to the one that the city of Danbury had, which was the subject of a court action and in which it was declared illegal. And so my recommendation is, is that let the council not adopt this ordinance.
That's pretty easy.
With Cliff?
Okay, a new ordinance, it's no longer to be an ordinance, available to anybody in town. I'd like to see a mailing list to go out to our local contractors. I did talk to a couple, I, I thought they were gonna be here tonight, maybe they heard about this and didn't show up. You know, and again, I, I bring up the point, they're, they're in town and they do dual functions, being served on various emergency squads and stuff, so it would've been nice, you know, if we could've got something. John makes it perfectly clear. So the next step is maybe ask the billing department even, or the purchasing people, even though they're tech savvy, some of these guys are not tech savvy, so whatever it takes to get the word out to our local guys. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other statements, comments? Okay, I guess we'll close the public hearing at 7:35. Go back to item A, State of Connecticut Health Plan.
At your special meeting last week, you did have a presentation from the staff of the Comptroller's Office on the partnership health plan, which municipalities can now join. I believe there's two members as of right now. And you had asked for the amount of savings the town was projected to have. And right now, the Board of Education, through Dominic, who is here this evening, 262,000 is projected, 424,000 for the town, 167,000 is projected. We do have representatives.
Using the latest costs, it's actually the 370.
The which one?
The 370.
Okay.
The only reason I gave the 260 model was.
Don, would you mind coming up to the mic just so people on TV could hear you?
Oh, boy.
Thank you.
Because the, the original cost projection that they had given us some months ago was, it came out to savings of about $260,000. It's now up to about $360,000. The reason being, they have continued to look at our experience, which has continued to go down. So if we're sort of, with the, with the latest number, we're kinda comparing apples and oranges. However, those numbers would be real based on today's dollars if we were to get the same renewal rate from Anthem for the following year.
So the, the 369 is based on the figures they gave us at Tuesday night, the, the cost per package? Okay. And the 262 was based on original numbers that they gave you?
Which was, as I said, that was based on the data that was obviously much closer to what Anthem's renewal was based on. Had our experience been going up, then, you know, likely the savings, instead of getting bigger, would've gotten smaller.
And the, the savings, does that include assuming a dental plan and a vision plan with the medical? Cause I know those were the two optional pieces.
There's, it, it assumes one, it, I'm not really sure. I didn't pen, I didn't spend a lot of time on those because those may actually have to be tailored to the other contracts that we have in place.
But they're nominal.
But they're, they're not a large, a large amount of money.
The bulk is from the medical.
And Donna, most of your contracts, if we didn't make a decision on this health insurance tonight, and let's say down the road, it's comparable, or if not better, is this something we could adopt later on?
Oh, yeah. I mean, what, what would, what typically has to happen is, most of the contracts have some sort of language about changing carriers. The teacher's contract is, is actually very specific when it comes to changing carriers. And there's a process that we go through, but basically, we give them the contract, they have the opportunity to object, and there's actually a framed arbitration question within the teacher's contract. So, you know, there isn't a specific time in which you could invoke it.
So if it moved forward, what would be the earliest date considering these, these timeframes? If you decide to.
January 1st is probably a push, but it might be doable. And of course, part of it will depend on whether there's an objection or not.
Okay.
Plus, as we talked about earlier, there's things that are still negotiable. I know if we wanna move ahead with, if there's a penalty, if you don't do the complete.
Thank you.
You know, preventative work, that would be negotiable because that's not, that's up to us. So there still are some portions of it that are negotiable. And there are representatives from the state. Katie's here and Tracy's here this evening if you do have questions. And I also put, Katie had given to me, depending on when we join, how long the lock-in rates are for. So obviously, if you join January 1st, it's an 18-month rate guarantee. Join another period, it won't be as long.
Well, you have in your memo here, it says if we join for December 1st, 2012, the rates would renew on July 1st, 2013?
Yeah, Katie, that's correct. Yes.
So, so we wouldn't get an 18-month if we joined for December 1st, but we get an 18-month if we join on January 1st of 2013?
What we would do is look at the, the claims experience going, you know, to date and we can do an 18-month rate. It may change slightly, but not very much.
Well, 18 months from December of 2012 wouldn't put us at July 1st of.
January. If you start with January 1st, you get no 18-month rate.
Right, so that would put us to July of 2014. But then it says if we did it for December 1st, 2012, we wouldn't get an 18-month. We'd only get six months.
Correct.
Okay.
Proficiency like that would make me really scared of this plan. It's just totally illogical why, if you go in a month earlier, the lock-in is for seven months and if you go in a month later, the lock-in is for 18 months.
Right. That's what doesn't make sense.
Two towns have this plan and those kind of rules, I'm really attracted by the cost savings, but I am put off by, A, the newness of the plan, B, some of it being a little bit arbitrary. And quite frankly, my biggest concern is our prior experience with state-sponsored plans that have come back.
No, you don't have to. I think it's just, at some point, you know, Donna, you're in negotiations, I'm in this still negotiations.
The teachers object to it, then we got a whole mess on our hands, so it's a 604 rate now.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that if you don't wanna do it, that just puts a whole different. And not that I need it tonight by coincidence, but that just puts a whole different spin on things. We can both go forward in different directions.
Why don't we table it until the next meeting and see what other information we get?
What?
Table it till the next meeting and see what other information we get.
I'd like to make a motion to table it till the next meeting.
Can I second? I think Penny Scott's a good one. Is it possible to present, is it a big burden to present this to the Board of Ed employees, Donna, and see if they object to it? That'll tell us something right there.
That'll save us a lot of bad decisions.
I mean, if that's, you know, if, if, if the sense is, well, I mean, I, I imagine we could even do it on an exploratory basis if that's, you know, that's obviously, we don't have that many people that we're dealing with, so it wouldn't be a huge issue.
Right. And if it's gonna be a total revolt, there's no sense in going forward, obviously. Put the dealers out.
Okay.
Moved by Counselor Yucy, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Siana?
Yes.
Item C, 1% capital fund transfer, Board of Education.
This is actually a two-part item. Your call at budget time, there was discussion regarding the creation of a 1%, up to 1% of the Board of Education's budget, if it was unspent, could be put into a capital project fund. And I kinda delineated the items, as I recall them, some of the parameters that were set up at that time. Namely, freedom out of the town finance department and Board of Ed finance must agree on a year-end balance. Assuming there are unexpendanted funds and the amount of these unexpendanted funds not to exceed 1% of the Board of Education's adopted budget, that given fiscal year can be transferred into an account on the town's general ledger to be solely used for capital projects for the Board of Education. Item three, the Board of Education should then submit to the town council for their approval a listing of the proposed expenditures of these funds. Step four, the town's finance department will charge the expenses for said projects to the new 1% BOE Capital Projects Fund and provide the town council and Board of Education with financial reports to identify the expenditures and reflect remaining balance. And then the last one, this process is subject to review and approval annually by the town council. That's how I recall the discussion at the budget time. If there's any other changes they wanna make to those parameters, now's your chance to change the guidelines, if you will. And then step two of the motion is to actually transfer, based on the June 2012 year-end balance, 68,500 into that fund.
Now, the council says what projects are gonna be approved and where it's gonna be done off the list?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's about the guideline at, at the budget time.
Right.
So I'm sure, so again, if there's any of these, you know, parameters you wanna change, now's your chance to change the parameters. Though it's gonna be, this is way, this is the rule that's gonna be placed, so. If you don't like the, the.
That's a whole separate fund just for capital.
That's correct. It'll be on our books in our capital reserve fund. We'll have it segregated out for BOE capital expenditures. Board will submit a list to you folks and you'll bless them and then we'll take the money out of there as the projects get completed.
I'm satisfied.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council establishes the 1% Board of Education Capital Fund allowable per Connecticut general statutes 10-248A in pursuant to the criteria listed above.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Siana?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the town council instructs the treasurer, finance director to transfer 68,500 from the Board of Education's remaining balance as of June 30th, 2012, to the newly created 1% BOE Capital Projects Fund.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Duddy?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fuji?
Yes.
Counselor Siana?
Yes.
Contingency transfers.
There are two items under 9D for contingency transfers. The first Counselor Angeloni alluded to before regarding the online tax payments. If you desire to pay your taxes online in North Branford currently, that's only allowed in the current months of collection, in January and July. A static file is sent to a third party that we use. If you wanna pay your tax payments, you go to that website theoretically and you make the payments. Our software vendor has a module used by quite a few towns that allows for year-round ability to pay taxes with a credit card online. It allows, the, the bugaboo with the first one is that you can't look back at prior years. This is actually, the files are updated every night through our software. So if you were to go on there right now and you had delinquent taxes from 2008, let's say theoretically 2009, whatever it was, you can get the balance as of right now with the, with the correct interest amount and so on. And so it, it's, the goal, and I'm talking to the town of Winchester. She has a little bit small, she's about 11,000 people. She has 2,500 of her, of her users already paying taxes through the system online. So it, it's convenient. Another issue that happens is you get the bill in Janu, in July, let's say, and you misplace it. So in August, you find the bill, you send it into the tax department with the same amount. Well, obviously, there's a month of interest, that's delinquent on there. So what has to happen is, let's say for sake of argument, it's a hundred dollar bill and it becomes 105 with interest. You send a hundred dollars in. So they, they have to go and apply the hundred dollars, 95 to principal, or 5 to interest, and then they can another copy the bill, put it in the mail, send it out to you and saying, hey, excuse me, sir, you owe us five dollars more because you were late. This eliminates that. They can go online, as of the day, they find the bill and say, okay, I found the bill in July, maybe it's August, September, whatever it is, I can go online, get the final number as of today and pay the accurate number. So it eliminates a lot of aggravation, a lot of people coming into the office with incorrect amounts. It also allows for, sometimes title searchers will come and they need a copy of the tax bill to prove that someone paid the taxes. You can get it online with this as well. So its goal is to streamline operations, improve collections in the department by making it more conducive to the taxpayer to stay at home, pay their taxes, no matter when the year is, the service will be available. Versus if you go on our website now, big red block comes up. It says, sorry, not available anymore until next collection season. So that's the goal of this, of that one. The second one, the 4,700 remote desktop server, is actually a function of the upgrade you folks approved for the financial software. Because it's a Windows-based system now, the remote buildings, police, fire, Public Works, recreation, library, and so on, you can't get into that data now. This is a separate box server that will sit in our server room and they could actually dial remote over the antenna into that server, into the data. Well, that was the original intention and that worked out really well. A byproduct that's coming of this is a lot of the remote sites don't do file backups. Public Works, for example, is a, is a classic case. All his files and the secretary's files are on, on a PC. PC, you know, goes out, which happens sometimes. The files are all lost. One of the advantages of this program, of this separate server, is they can actually have our, their files on our file server, backed up nightly over the internet. So it provides a means of security. It provides for file sharing. We do the budget annually every year. For the people in the building, we have, it's called a general drive. It's a G-drive. Everybody accesses it internally. Well, now the external folks can access that, this as well. Previously, I'd email their budgets out to them, they'd email the budget back. Now, if they're gonna be able to share our, our network drives, Kurt has Rico, has the, the town maps. They can access that information remotely as well. Can't do that currently. So there's a lot of advantages besides the access to the new financial software that are gonna come in this, of this second.
Is this all gonna be password protected?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, usernames and passwords, correct.
I'll make the motion.
Are we different?
You passed on the software previously.
Software.
It's just in the process of being installed.
Oh, okay.
And the access for the remotes.
Anthony, on this software, people paying by credit card, is, what type of fees are there associated?
That's an excellent point. The, the current situation allows, it's driven by your bank, quite honestly. They have, I think it's a 3% fee added on. The current situation is no cost to the town. It's done through this firm called Official Payments, they're large in the tax collection world. They add 3% onto your bill. If you pay with a credit card, pay with a debit card, or give them a check number, I think it's like a $5 or $3 flat fee, more advantageous. With the girl in Winchester, the woman in Winchester said is that you can also work to reduce those fees. So if you want people truly to pay this method, maybe negotiate a little better fee with your bank, so maybe make a 3, make a 2%.
Well, you can go out to private merchant, merchant services companies too.
Correct.
Some of those only charge between a half percent and one and a half percent.
Correct. So it does open to work for us to do.
The charges on the end user, not on a, not on the town?
That's correct. That's correct. It's 'cause it's one of those things, it's only like a user fee. It's not fair if you don't use the system to cover, and your tax bill might uses it kinda thing, so.
Gotcha.
If you're gonna use it, you're gonna pay for it.
It's like an ATM fee.
Exactly.
And will this also broaden into sewer fee, besides taxes? Can you get into other areas, or?
Yes, you should be able to. Yeah, any bill you have through a wall system, which will be tax and sewer, correct, you could pay online. That's a good, that's a good point.
Now they don't do checking accounts or routing numbers or any of that stuff, right? It's just credit cards?
Or you, I think you put an ACH number in, if you wanna do a check number, you can do that as well.
Right, ACH routing.
Usually it's a lesser fee typically than credit card.
When will the backups be done on the router?
You probably get daily, right? Or?
The, the server, I'm sorry.
The server's done nightly. It's done through the internet to, through a company called Mosey that backs up all our data on the internet.
They're doing it now.
Correct.
Right.
This just expands that data. The, the Public Works, for example, their files will be housed on our server, backed up nightly, versus now, they're just running free out there with no backup.
Yeah, they're just checking to make sure that the backups are done on our servers.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's done 2 o'clock in the morning.
We have motion by Councilor Dooty, motion seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Sienna.
Yes.
Item E, financial reports.
Financial report before you for September, about a quarter of the way through the year. Tax collections, again, the three items typically look at tax collections right on par with last year, 52.0%. Total revenue, slightly ahead of last year, 40.7% of budget compared to 40.1%. And on the bottom, the expenditures, again, have been tracking a few percent higher. No departments are over expended as of yet, and the report is basically unremarkable. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
What's going on with your investment income?
Investment income is an interesting dilemma. What we've done in the last couple of years is, we have gone to laddering out CDs, and we've gone out probably two and a half to three years to gain about a 1% interest rate.
So you're tying money up for three years for 1%?
It's surplus money we have in general fund, based on tax. There's a core amount of our fund balance, that surplus that we keep rolling over. The last renewals, however, I will tell you that the three-year rate is down to about .77. So it's crazy. It's gonna help us when we do our notes end of this month.
Yeah.
So we'll save some money there, but it's really taking a bite at our interest income.
Okay.
Yeah. So to get, to get 1%, I think the last one I have, I could've gotten was like a five or six year, and I chose not to buy that far. I'm pretty sure the interest rate's gonna be five or six years. I mean, the predictions are it's gonna last, you know, at least two or three more years.
They're not going anywhere.
I don't wanna go five or six years, yeah, so.
Item F, tax refunds.
How move the tax refunds?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Dooty, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Dooty.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Fuji.
Yes.
Councilor Sienna.
Yes.
Item 10, citizen statements and petitions.
I thought he.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
To second session.
Second.
And to second session.
Second.
I tried.
Do we have, do we have a town manager?
Yeah. We have actually three batters.
I'd go with Stephen.
I'll go with Stephen.